Okay, we'll start. I call this public hearing on the proposed local law number three, 2021, fund balance policy held on this day, March ninth, 2021 via teleconference and using Zoom with a YouTube livestream to the public. This is due to the COVID-19 emergency state and federal bans on large meetings that were gatherings and pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.1 issued on March 12th, 2020, suspending the open meetings law. We will not be pledging to the flag. We do have to do a roll call vote because we got to establish that we have a quorum. Supervisor Oberly here, Councilwoman Cunningham.
Here.
Councilman Giuliano.
Here.
Councilman Dean Michael.
Here.
Councilman Witten.
Here.
Town Clerk Carol Mackin.
Here.
We have a quorum, so we can continue. Town Clerk, please read the public hearing notice.
Please take notice that the Town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 9th, 2021 via Zoom video conference, consistent with executive orders 202.1 and 202.15 as extended, addressing the COVID-19 virus at 6:25 PM prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning proposed local law number three of 2021 entitled Fund Balance Policy, pursuant to Article 16 of the New York Town Law. Please take further notice due to public health concerns. In-person attendance will not be permitted. However, the public will be fully able to observe and participate in the public hearing via computer, smartphone, tablet, or other electronic device. The public is invited to attend the public hearing held via Zoom video conference and comment on the proposed local law. Members of the public who wish to comment will be able to do so by joining the meeting via Zoom electronically or by telephone. The pass codes will be published by noon on March 8th, which will enable the public to participate in the meeting. The codes can also be retrieved by emailing Town Clerk Carol Mackin, townclerk@townofclinton.com on March 8th until 3:00 until March 9th, 2021. Comments for public hearing can also be submitted in advance by emailing the town clerk. The local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed law are available at the town clerk's office and the townofclinton.com for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date, time, and place aforesaid.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open the floor to Zoom for comments and turn the meeting over to Councilman Witten, who is the author of this local law. So if you have any comments, he'll handle them.
I mean, most of you know what this is. This is just a policy we'd like to put in place to manage our fund balance and make sure we have adequate fund balances and reserves. And that it doesn't also get, I guess, too high, so we wouldn't be taxing the residents and not spending their money. So if anybody's got comments, love to hear it.
Is there anybody in the waiting room at all?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
We're at 6:30 now, too, so.
Okay, I guess there's nobody commenting anymore. So at this time, there being no further comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Giuliano, second.
Okay, roll call Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried, public hearing is closed. Now we do a roll call vote for adjourning the public hearing. I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Giuliano.
Okay, roll call vote Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. This public hearing is closed and we will now go into the regular town board meeting. Okay, I'm opening up the regular town board meeting. This is the town, a Clinton Town Board regular meeting was being held on March 9th, 2021 via teleconferencing using Zoom with a YouTube livestream to the public. This is due to the COVID-19 emergency state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings in pursuit to Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.1 issued on March 12th, 2020, suspending the open meetings law. The members of the public may view the board meeting as it is livestreamed on the Town Board Videos page on the Town of Clinton website. There is no public participation at this meeting. I'll have to do a roll call to establish that we have a quorum. Supervisor Oberly here. Councilman Giuliano.
Here.
Councilman Witten.
Here.
Councilman Dean Michael.
Here.
Councilwoman Cunningham.
Here.
Town Clerk Mackin.
Here.
We have a quorum, so we can conduct business. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 9th, 2021 public hearing on updating town code. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Roll call Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. This is another minute. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 9th, 2021 Town Board Meeting. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Roll call Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one is, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 24th, 2021 special meeting. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Okay, roll call Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael. Dean.
Aye.
Did you say aye?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, supervisor's comment. The Clinton Town Office's Highway Department Justice Court Office and Court will be closed for the Good Friday holiday on Friday, April 2nd. The Clinton Community Library will be open on Good Friday for usual hours. The recycling center will be open as usual from 7:30 AM to noon on Saturday, April 3rd. The DEC's annual burn ban is in effect from Tuesday, March 16th to Friday, May 14th. This means you cannot have any outside open fires in order to reduce the incidences of grass and brush fires. All year, there is a burn ban on the use of outside burn barrels. You can receive a fine for doing illegal burning during the burn ban time. If a grass fire occurs, immediately call 911 to report it, so the fire department can quickly extinguish it and minimize property damage. The Fiddler's Bridge Road Bridge near the intersection of Long Pond Road by West Clinton Station Number Two Firehouse will be closed to all traffics during June through September, 2021, while the bridge is being replaced. The D-Tur routes have not been published at this time by Dutchess County Public Works. This alert is being published now, so you can plan traffic flows during your summer activities, parties, construction activities for equipment and supply deliveries, et cetera, for services and guests. For more information, as more information becomes available, it will be announced at Town Board meetings. There are three general places to get vaccinations, New York State-run centers, Dutchess County centers, and pharmacies. Each has a different way to obtain an appointment. These vaccinations are for COVID. To get a New York State appointment, you must phone their hotline, 1-833-697-4829, open seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM. And their closest centers are either SUNY Albany or Westchester County Center. For the Dutchess County appointments, you must sign up at www.dutchesscountyny.gov/covidvaccine to complete the COVID-19 vaccination request form and to get alerts on your computer when appointments are available and for more information who is allowed to get a vaccination. Sign up now, so you are ready as the eligibility requirements change, especially reducing the age. When the alert comes on your computer, you must quickly click on it, on the button, to get an appointment. The county has also set up a telephone service, 845-486-3555, option two, for seniors having serious medical problems who do not have a computer or also may require transportation to the vaccination center. To be added to the notification, this is all to be added to the notification list. When you receive a phone call, you must then set up your appointment. The number of appointments are made depending on the number of vaccines received from New York State for that week, and these quantities are increasing rapidly. The county centers are located at the old J.C. Penney Store in the Galleria on Route 9 in Wappingers and at Dover at the old CVS location on Route 22. For pharmacy vaccinations at CVS, Rite Aid, and Walgreens, they are setting up their own appointments only on their webpage, not through their local pharmacies. And vaccination locations will be shown on their webpage. Vaccinations are becoming available and you may be put on a list to be alerted when vaccinations are available at your local pharmacy. No Walkins will be given a vaccination. You'll need an appointment. The CVS contact through www.cvs.com or using the CVS Pharmacy app or telephone number 800-746-7287 if you do not have a computer. The Walgreen webpage for appointments is www.walgreens, that's with an S at the end, dot com slash schedule vaccine. For Rite Aid appointments, go to their webpage, www.riteaid.com/covid19 or call 800-748-3243. Information on the Transco Transmission Power Line project is available on their webpage, Actual construction in Clinton will begin in 2022, with the Electrical Transmission Service beginning by December, 2023. Additional Transco presentations will be scheduled in 2021 as more information becomes available. The information I gave you on the COVID vaccinations will put on the webpage, so if you didn't write all the numbers down, you can go there and see what it's all about. So now we go to the regular business. Okay. Reports Nancy, did you want to say something?
Yes, as the COVID restrictions start to ease up a little bit, we've made a decision that we will open all the parks in the town. It's Randmark Park, Friends Park, and the park over by the town complex. We are looking to open April 15th, and normally we close the parks around October 31st. However, we have, in the past few years, left them open if weather permits. We will be having a summer program for the young children. How we structure that will be dependent on the kind of enrollment we get. We are currently looking to hire gate guards, lifeguards, and staff for the program, so if anyone is interested in any of those, they can, everything will be on the website as to what to do. And right now, we have some limited numbers of information on the website, but within the next week, we'll have post dates for the summer programs, et cetera. And I know a lot of people are interested in the pavilion. We will have pavilion open for use as well. The occupancy will depend on where we are with the COVID opening numbers, but we'll communicate that as we can, okay?
Thank you. I'm sure a lot of parents will be happy who have kids, getting something to do this summer.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay, at this time, Jewel would be giving us a presentation on the programs that we have with them, so everybody knows what's going on. So Jeff, start up the presentation.
Great, thank you so much. And yeah, this is Jeff Demansky, and thank you so much for having me here. I'm trying to start my video. I'm going to share a screen if you don't mind.
Yep, no problem.
Great. Okay, start to the beginning here. Okay, is that sufficiently visible for everyone?
Yeah, looks good to me.
Yep, looks good.
All right, great. Thank you so much again. I'm Jeff Demansky, and I am the Executive Director of Hudson Valley Energy, which is a nonprofit program that is the program manager chosen by Jewel Community Power, who is the administrator for the Community Choice Aggregation Program that Clinton chose to join beginning of 2020. And this is a progress report that we decided would be very useful to share in terms of some statistics on how the program has done and through the end of 2020. And I'll talk about the agenda that we talked about, but this is, I'm just going to do a brief presentation tonight, hopefully keep it to not much more than 10 minutes, sort of just an overview of the presentation that we gave and did record. And there is, if you look underneath the box, underneath the title of Hudson Valley Community Power 2020 Progress Update, I do have a link here, and I did share this in an email back on February 10th to the link for the recording of the presentation, which is just over an hour long, so there's good detail on about two dozen slides of data. And so that is available at any time, and I'm happy to schedule another meeting for a detailed dive for the board and/or community members going forward. As you guys know, I definitely enjoy talking about the program, so we'll take every opportunity. But this is jumping forward, and our contact information is on here. But jumping forward, this was the agenda of items that we spoke to in that recorded presentation. We gave an, we didn't assume anyone knew what the program was. This buying club that the town has created in partnership with other communities on behalf of their residents for electricity supply with the idea of promoting renewable sources coming onto the New York grid in a way that was very cost-effective for the community members. So we do a highlight overview, and I will speak to that in a moment about the overview of the program and speak to some of the highlights. And then the second agenda item that we speak to is a partner communities update, just reflecting on who the other members of this partnership are, of the Hudson Valley Community Power Partnership, but also reflecting on the other aggregations that Jewel is doing around the state, just for some contextual understanding about the amount of work that's been happening, which is very exciting, including the other aggregation that we launched in the fall of 2020 in the Hudson Valley in Rockland County. So there's detail on those communities that are part of this and some reference to the new communities that we are working with right now to join this partnership as we approach the renewal time, which this two-year contract that the Hudson Valley Community Power Program established ends at the end of June of 2021. So we're in the last quarter of that two-year agreement. And as you might recall, for the process, the program can't just be extended. We repeat the process and do so in a way that can be seamless for the partner communities that want to continue to offer this program for their community members, such that there can be a seamless transition to a new contract with a new rate that we obtain through the process that I'll talk about briefly for the, for the community members. So that's another good reason why we were speaking to some of the logistics within the, within the presentation. So after the, the talking about the logistics of the new community members in that second bullet, we do talk in some detail, and I'll provide an overview tonight of the program performance, just highlighting, kind of not going into deep, but showing you what's there and happy to answer questions about it. And then what we do, what I will talk about in terms of the overview of the program is an evolution in what has been an opportunity on community solar, which Clinton is very familiar with, since you were a wonderful active partner in doing outreach to encourage people to take advantage of community solar. But there is some very interesting and exciting development of what's happened at the state level and in Central Hudson and by Central Hudson that is changing an opportunity associated with community solar, and that's reflected in the next steps. And I'll definitely speak to that tonight, just to explain what the immediate next steps are for some decision-making for the Town of Clinton. So the overview, as I promised, just speaking to an understanding of what the program is. And to date, these are two familiar topics underneath the umbrella of what this Community Choice Aggregation has been. There's two boxes here. One is for electricity supply, and in essence, that is the buying club that the, the town helped to create in partnership with the nine other communities that are, that are the partners in the Hudson Valley Community Power Program. And that is for electricity supply, and that is a way that we got a very competitive rate for 100% renewable sourced electricity from New York State in a way that was very consumer protective. You know, it was offered on an opt-out basis, but because it was a no-contract, no-restriction beneficial program to the community members for our partner communities. Parallel to that, an additive benefit is community solar. And Clinton was wonderful in helping to do outreach to encourage community members to subscribe to a community solar project. And we frequently speak to the differences between this electricity supply decision and community solar, and we do go into it in some depth in the presentation, the recorded presentation, but making clear that community solar is a way to facilitate local projects by becoming a subscriber within the state-mandated process for what a community solar project is. In essence, it's a way to virtually own solar panels. Instead of installing them on your property or on your building, you become a virtual owner of a field of solar panels that's in Central Hudson territory. And by becoming a subscriber with no fees, there's no hidden costs associated with this. You just subscribe, and in return, you end up, for these participants, with a 10% saving off of your entire electricity bill, which is a monetary credit, and it's based on the portion assigned to you. So it's a separate arrangement from the electricity supply portion. It is a second way to contribute to putting more renewables on the New York State grid with a separate financial transaction. The electricity supply is a line item change of the supply section of your Central Hudson bill. The community solar credit comes after that in the, in the, in the, and the charges and adjustment section. So it's a reduction, a deduction that happens if you are a subscriber to community solar. And that was an opt-in program for, for, for community members. The exciting news that's happened is that this is transitioning now per state mandate on the utility companies, where what we have spoken about, where if you had been a community solar subscriber, you had to deal with a second bill, a bill that was always 90% of the credit you got on your utility bill, such that you ended with a 10% savings. But that was a logistical hurdle that people had to accept if they opted in, if they signed up for community solar with a contract. The state told the utility companies that they had to do away with the need for the second bill, do what is called consolidated billing, which has allowed in the utilities that have completed consolidated billing, which to date is only national grid, which serves a lot of upstate New York, but by this spring, by April, will be the rest of the utilities in New York State. Central Hudson is definitely expected to have completed by then, meaning that both the electricity supply portion of the program and the community solar portion of the program can be offered as an opt-out program, both of them without contracts, meaning complete flexibility for community members. It becomes additional opportunities that they can take advantage of for cost savings and two ways to promote renewables on the New York State grid. And so the enrollment numbers will be very significant. We, we, we very much expect in the communities that choose to do both. And that is a preview of the next step that we'll talk about as I get towards the end. So that's my overview of the program. I'll definitely save time for questions. Now I'm just going to jump into kind of the overview of what we talked about for program performance, you know, what, how did we do in the, the program since we launched with the six original communities in July of 2019? And then the four additional communities came on through, through 2020. So breaking the highlights of performance into three categories in terms of reflections of what the program highlights are overall for the presentation. In the upper left, for the electricity supply portion of the CCA program, that we had collectively across the 10 communities, more than 25,000 households. And because of the predominance of the community members that stayed in the default option for all 10 communities of a 100% renewable electricity supply, more than 200,000 greenhouse, tons of greenhouse gas emissions were avoided. So very significant impacts, and then the double asterisks indicate that in the reporting that was done by the supplier we selected, that was hydro power from New York State, which is a mix that will change as the programs go forward. There are solar and wind power projects that are in development that will feed CCA programs, so that it won't just be hydro power in the years ahead. The pandemic did have an impact, unfortunately, on the, on the cost benefits of our program, such that because of the difference between our fixed rates and what had been the dipping rates after the pandemic hit, the utility rates, our estimate for the part of the program participants was about a $5.50 per household per month, you know, so each household for a monthly basis paid about $5.50 more for the 100% renewable product versus what they would have paid if they stayed with Central Hudson for the non-renewable rate. So there was an impact, but a relatively minor impact. But that is important to note that that is in terms of sourcing and apples-to-oranges comparison. The additional benefit that we've talked about from the program is that through this buying club for renewables, you need to do an apples-to-apples comparison as well for what people would have paid for comparable 100% renewable products, and by which case there was significant savings. Our rate was often 30% on average, less than what people would have paid for a private product. There was extensive engagement with the customers. There's a lot of moving parts, and I do apologize, there's a lot I'm throwing at you tonight. But what I loved about the program, obviously from my perspective and being the outreach and education person, was to do outreach and education in the communities throughout the life of our program to date and going forward. And we, we noted, we logged, there were more than 7,000 customer interactions across our 10 communities through the end of 2020. On the, within the CCA umbrella on community solar, what had been an opt-in program, we had about 843 households that chose to opt in across our 10 communities, each of them saving 10% on their total electric charges. So important to think that those who chose to do community solar, that more than offset the, the difference in the supply portion of the difference. That more than offset the the difference in the supply portion of the difference that we just talked about for those highlights, so people end up saving more money if they were did the combination of the two. Which is something to think about in terms of if Clinton decides to continue to do this program. And then is considering offering both opt out options that this is a reason to do so, that you actually can offer a component that guarantees savings. And through this effort of community solar highlights, we 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 helped fill up nine solar fields in the Hudson Valley. The highlight of what's new and next is that we are, you know, going to have a conversation, we're encouraging, you know, that's why we're so grateful to be able to talk tonight, just to start the conversation about what the renewal process looks like, and we've been talking to the supervisor about this already. For the electricity supply contract and for consideration of this opt out community solar option. Digging into more of the the performance of the program, the environmental performance. This is a chart by which we show the impact of the of the supply portion of the program. The the by community by community. Where the by the number of people that were in the 100% renewable option, what they displaced. From what and what we use for data here was the an inventory of emissions by community. That was released in 2012, so it's 2010 data, so there is potentially some discrepancy between the numbers. Though electricity use has been fairly consistent over the last decade in New York State communities. But in this case, the total but heart height of the bar, if you add the two numbers shown in in the green and the brown section, it would be total greenhouse gas emissions in in metric tons. With the green portion being what was displaced in our in our calculations by the participation of the community members. In the 100% renewable option. And you can see for Clinton, you know, and there is again some discrepancy potentially, but it shows a significant contribution. Friend, this is just focused on electric emissions from from residential and small commercial, which are the. The sector that is automatically included in our program. And you can see that, you know, I think it's a lack of other commercial. Or larger scale prob customers in the in these communities versus the other communities where the impact was less, but still significant. You know, approaching 50% impact in the village and town of New Polk and the town of Red Hook. This was an additional slide that's not in the recording, but I but you know, I did share these slides with the town, so you have this for your for your records. This slide, what for the other six communities was included and shows a similar story. You know, approaching 50% impacts on total greenhouse gas emissions from the residential electric and small commercial electric consumption in these communities. And typically where as in Clinton, where it's predominant majority is is offset. It tends to be about the size and the and the and the sector mix within the community. This is a table shifting over to the impact from the community solar program and the communities are shown in the first column, there are 10 communities. With a couple of additional because there was different approaches for the use of a sustainability fund. That was created by a $50 contribution by jewel to these communities for development of a sustainability funds. And you can see that. You know, for a relatively small community of Clinton, there was not a bad result in terms of the outreach where 52 enrollments occurred. Accruing a $2,600 pool of funds that is to be determined, it's used by the town of Clinton. And this is, you know, there's flexibility in the use of these funds, it's basically just in conversation with Joel to talk about how to use these funds. But the interesting story here is that this is based on opt in community solar. And something to think about, the program structure remains the same. Where this was, you know, not a bad result with more than 50 households deciding to opt into this to this opportunity. But if this was an opt out program, as is now going to be possible at with the relaunch of the program in these communities. It will be an order of magnitude and sometimes even multiples of that of of households who will opt in. And you know, have the decision making hurdle removed for them and restrictions, no contract restrictions where they will just. Reap guaranteed savings off the total electric bill. And for every one of those those households that stay in the program, the same $50 per household contribution will be made by jewel to each of the communities. So this will be tens of thousands of dollars that the communities will be able to use for sustainability funding, sustainability projects. So very exciting in that way, and also shown on the table are some of the other projects that the other communities chose to do in the last column. For example, in the city of Beacon where I live. The city voted through a voting process to dedicate the more than $10,000 that were raised. To the Beacon City School District and they're going to be using that to join a Duchess Boses Sustainability and Climate Education. Program that was established this year, which is very exciting. This is more detailed than I'll jump into, but we do keep track, this is where we based on the consumption, we came, we we were able to produce the the record of what the. The difference in impact was between the variable utility rate, which is that green line that goes up and down like a roller coaster. And our fixed program rates, which are the our program rates are the yellow is the 100% renewable. And you might recall that there was an option that folks could choose to if they wanted to go for a standard rate. Which was a fuel mix similar to the green utility mix. That was slightly less expensive. And so we there were months where, you know, we were we were lower than the utility rates. But then things were trending beautifully up until April of or until May of 2020, when the pandemic hit, and if you. You can see the just juxtaposition of the line down. If that line had not taken the dip in my argument, and this we talked about this at length. That this line moved up, we would have made up for for time and may have been in the black in terms of the the program benefits, it certainly shows a story at the end of this graph where the utility rates. With the return, the anticipation return of the economy are projecting up to where utility rates are expected to be. And they were on average. The red straight line is that private sector marketplace, what an individual looking for a private contract. For 100% renewable. Product would be on average, or our best could find. So our program rates were well below that, to speak to that apples to apples comparison. This is a table that shows the different, the change in participation. From of households from the start of the program. Which is the middle column, the third column. To what but the number of households in each community as of October 2020. And it shows that there was overall, as we anticipated in the beginning, about a, you know, there was about a 10% in the start of the program. But people did continue to choose to take advantage of the ability to opt out of the program. Not least because of the difference in utility rates that that we saw happen. Clinton had the smallest of the total attrition rates, which is wonderful from our perspective. And and choosing to stay in the program, Clinton was the last to join the program of the 10. But still, it's a, you know, a low attrition rates, you know, a low opt out rate from the program. But this data is available. Now, I kind of do a combination, you might notice I'm not exactly in this presentation going in the order of the agenda, so I'm going to jump just to talking about next steps. In which I'll talk about the electricity supply next step. And then for consideration, the community solar next steps. So for the next steps for the electricity supply. At some length, we talk about this table, this is a table of numbers. It's about the market projections for electricity supply going forward. In essence, it tells the story about what we expected and what we saw happen to the utility rates with the. The pandemic's impact is shown in here, you know, from 2020 through 2022. The takeaway in brief, and we do talk about this at length, is with the increase of number towards the lower to towards the right from where they had been. In the future years projecting forward. That it is a good story. It that it is a good time to go back out to the marketplace to fix a rate. Because of the anticipated growth in utility rates, you know, as we saw from that increase that that jump up in the in the graph. Of utility rates that is expected, even though with some fluctuation down occasionally. But the forward projection is anticipated to be very good in terms of what can be achieved on the cost benefit of our program. And again, more words, more description is in that the longer recorded presentation. But with this idea, if it's decided that Clinton wants to continue to to offer this program to the community. This is our first step and the next step for electricity supply renewal process. Is to give this presentation, which we're doing tonight, just to give the overview and encourage more, you know, reviewing the the recorded presentation. Or bringing us back for in depth conversation and we're happy to do that. We have shared, I've shared with the supervisor, a resolution. That is a page and a half, that's a non binding resolution. That enables Jewel to act on to continue to act on behalf of the community, to go out to the market to explore whether. The rates look good for continuation of the electricity supply contract. That resolution also covers the option without any binding nature, the option of also doing opt out community solar. It's not a decision that needs to be made in passing the resolution, the resolution allows the continued exploration. No decision needs to be made at this time, even passing the resolution that will come with the review of the one, the request for proposals which will be issued. And for the supply contract that is going to be in April. And and again, as you might recall, it's the RFP by which the community sets the requirements for launching a program. So it can say, we're not going to go forward with this program if the rate is above X and so cents per kilowatt hour. So that that is baked in to give the community complete control over how to move forward and if to move forward with the program. So we do hope that the resolution will be passed so that we can continue to include. Clinton, we can include Clinton with the other communities for the RFP issuance. For community solar next steps, just revisiting again what community solar is, it is a parallel opportunity to the electricity supply portion. The electricity supply decisions that a customer has in Clinton are on the left table here. Where they always have the ability to choose to have Central Hudson make their decision for them for supply if they so choose. Or as many have, they can choose to do a third party supply contract. But now Clinton has as its default CCA, the supply rate obtained by the aggregation partnership as a supply rate. Which is different and additive if people choose from a solar decision. And just to break the very, you know, the the full spectrum of solar decisions that's that that a utility customer has, they need to do nothing about solar, which is choice A. Somebody can install solar on their home or business. Or they can take advantage of community solar. If only one option is a is a is is able to be chosen in each table. So you can have solar on your home and do community solar. But community solar is there for the majority of the of the population that has not. Installed a solar system on their on their property, so just to define what it's about. And as we spoke about, as I described, this describes what the new opportunity is. The ability to do community choice solar under the CCA umbrella. Which is again, using the municipality's ability to 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 vet opportunities. And offer to their residents and no contract option for subscribing to community solar. With without the contracts, as you can imagine, there's no restrictions on time to be part of this. And there's no fees into in this requirement. So that is kind of the beautiful, new and exciting opportunity that that can be explored. It is the same benefits of being a subscriber on an individual basis, which remains an opportunity for everyone, this is not the exclusive necessity, it's just an option.
Jeff, this is.
Yes, question.
Another question. You're getting long. 10 minutes.
I'm done, yeah, I'm done right now, actually. Is there a question though too, Ray, or is it just a time?
I just time.
But for it's the same resolution. That we talked about is included in the one non binding resolution. And then you there will be a separate RFP for the community solar options to see what supply is available for the community. And one last component of this, while. Community members who are in bill pay assistance programs such as the heat program, the home energy assistance program were not included. In CCA. They can be automatically included in community solar under CCA. In the opt out program, which is wonderful because they're the ones who stand to save the most with guaranteed savings through the program. So that is the overview that we wanted to provide, I could, I already did talk about the partner communities, but that's the gist of overview of the of the presentation, but happy to take questions. So thank you for that time.
Yeah, any board member have a question?
Okay, sure, I have a question, my name is Dean Michael.
So just so clarify for anybody that's listening. Is that in in your documents, well, in in one thing that you said versus what the document says is. You're saying that they had a 10% guarantee, the document says up to 10%. But then you were reflecting that it was actually costing $5 more. So how does that guarantee work if it's not really, if it costs people more?
There's a two side by side opportunities, there's a. I'm sorry. Was that the end of your, is that the end of your question?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, the video was lagging, so I wasn't sure if I was talking over you. There's a two parallel programs, one is CCA for electricity supply, the fixed rate. Which is not a guarantee, because as we saw with that chart with the utility rates. The one risk there is that the utility rates could be lower than our fixed rates. We didn't expect them to be, but the pandemic resulted in that happening. Community solar, that monetary credit program, it's not, it's nothing to do with rates. It's a monetary credit based on how much your assigned portion of a solar field. Generates converted to a monetary credit. And you are always guaranteed to get that monetary credit. So the community solar component is the guaranteed portion, the electricity supply portion, that's the one where there is not a guarantee, where there's a risk.
Right, but you in that one graph where you had the two lines. With the two different programs and then you had the ESCO on the top. And then you had the Central Hudson was, which was the wavy up and down line. You could see that it was a, for the most part, it was above the Central Hudson line for the most. For the for the most of that term. There was a couple of peaks where it went above, but for the most part. It looked like the dip was actually lower. Going with Central Hudson.
No, that's right, and that's why the $5.50 calculated per month difference that we talked about. Because it was predominantly our our rate was above Central Hudson's rate. Which to say, you know, to to make the qualification again, we saw from the the trends, you know, there are seasonal dips. But had the pandemic impact on the economy not happened, that would not have been the case.
Hey Jeff, this is Chris Giuliano. Board member. Is there any towns that? That you look that are planning on opting into this like new towns and is there any towns that are or communities that are potentially looking not to renew it at this point? Lost you there, Jeff.
No, that's right, and that's calculated per month, cause it was predominantly our our rate was to say, you know, to to make the qualification again, we saw from the the trends, you know, there are seasonal dips. But had the pandemic impact on the economy not happened, that would not have been the case. Yes, Chris.
We're having a delay.
Yeah, there's a delay there.
Did I, can anyone else give me a question for me?
Jeff, the question was, have any towns, new towns opted in and have any of the towns that were in opted out?
Oh, okay, thank you. No, we we are fully on track for all 10, we hope to to continue. We're eight have fully committed, they're going to go forward with the renewal, we're still working on two others to confirm that they will. And currently, three other communities are going to join, the town of Sargades, the town of Rhinebeck. And the town of Gardner, which is in Ulster County. The village of Sargades is very possible, might be a little lagged behind the town. And there's a couple of others, but those should be at least three, possibly five additional.
Thank you.
Any more?
I just wanted to clarify what Dean had said, so, because I know this is the part that confuses everybody. The community choice aggregation was the part that everybody was automatically put into. In that program, everybody's been, it's been costing people on average 550 a month more. Then you can opt into community solar, which only 850 communities have done in this group that we're in, or 850 customers have done. Those people do get a guaranteed 10%, I opted into community solar and I get a 10% discount every month. Which is separate from the community choice aggregation rate. But that 10% discount. Is more than the five. But that 10% discount is more than the five fifty a month that I would have paid extra.
That's correct.
But the 10% discount is off of what the, the community aggregate rate was.
It's, no, the 10% discount is only, well, yes, it's, it's off of that rate, but you get. Only the, the only people that get that 10% discount are the ones who opt into community solar.
Right, but if you look at the, the up and down band, it looked like. Even, even the, the 10% guaranteed band, which was the lower of the three. Was still higher than the ups and downs, so.
I'm getting approximately, if mine is an average of five fifty a month extra, if I weren't in community solar. Then I'd be paying five fifty a month extra, and my community solar is saving me between ten and twelve dollars a month.
And that's because community solar is not just a 10% discount on supply, it's a 10% on your total. Delivery and supply charges. And delivery tends to be the predominant cost on the utility bill.
Yeah, it used to be fifty fifty, but now delivery seems to be the mark.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thanks Jeff, and this stuff will be put on the webpage and referenced and links and all that good stuff.
All right, thank you so much for the time.
Okay. Now we'll jump over to Highway Superintendent Todd Martin.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, um, I just want to briefly go through this prior report that I have here. We will be working on the guardrails on Pumpkin Lane between Chablot and Maple Lane. End of March, expect road closures and delays on Pumpkin Lane. For that time, the end of March, like I said, beginning of April. The windstorm in February has crews cleaning up down trees and large branches. We are working on the dirt roads as far as potholes and the ruts and stuff with the spring coming with mud season here. We're working on that. We are also working and trying to maintain the trucks that we had with repairs and stuff due to the storms. The highway department has plowed and sanded the roads for fourteen times this month. With special attention to the dirt roads during the ice storms. I'd like to thank town board members for their sensitive approval, emergency purchase of a plow that went down in the middle of the snowstorm. We lost the plow with the plow blade on the front because of the dirt roads. So we had to have a special purchase on that. Also to let you guys know, the salt prices are going to remain the same for the twenty-one, twenty-two season. The price is fifty-nine dollars and forty-five cents a ton. The other thing I have is there is surplus trucks and equipment that I have for the highway department. I'm seeking approval tonight for surplus through Auction International on Pleasant Valley. You guys have a list of that also. Also, if you guys weren't aware, Pleasant Valley Highway Department was closed due to COVID. For two weeks, the highway superintendent and the whole crew was down because of COVID for fourteen days. The town of Clinton picked up their northern roads for them. Dutch County BPW picked up the inner roads for the town of Pleasant Valley. When I did the calculations of the trucks, our trucks, man-hours, time, material and everything else. It came out to be about eighteen thousand dollars and change. We made up the difference and salt to fill our salt shed up. So instead of seeking monetary money. I asked for salt from the town of Pleasant Valley and their town supervisor, which they obliged, and they gave us more. Than what I was asking for reimbursement for plowing, sanding and taking care of the roads. While those guys were down for the two weeks because of coronavirus. There was, I can't hear. You guys have a list of the surplus trucks I was asking for to surplus tonight. I'm asking for your blessing to surplus those trucks, those trucks have served the highway department well. They are getting older and it's not cost-effective for the highway department to keep these trucks anymore. Trying to save the taxpayers money and try to get rid of these trucks while we can still get some monetary. Value out of these trucks. I don't know if you guys want to go through those trucks or have any questions on those to be approved tonight for surplus.
So Todd, you. I heard that you have some trucks still out of service now?
I have one truck out of service with the coro, this coronavirus is affecting us all the way down to, to the highway department. It's hard to get parts, plow blades, auger chains and starters, alternators and stuff like that. I have one truck down, when I came in tonight for this meeting. The starter was in for the last truck, so hopefully by tomorrow. If not by Thursday, I will have my last truck up and running, so we will be up to a hundred percent.
Well, what, I guess where I'm getting to is the, it wouldn't be worth keeping anything as like a backup?
I do, I do have two trucks that I want to keep as backup, but the surplus trucks that I'm asking for a blessing tonight. They, they, they've outlived their time. I mean, I, I just can't keep throwing good money after bad money, the value of these trucks is what it's worth.
No, I, I agree, but I heard that there was three or four trucks that were out of commission and, and certainly going into a storm. To have nothing for backup, it would be very concerning to me. And if we're only going to get like six thousand dollars or sixty-five hundred dollars on a truck, I mean. We'd almost be better off keeping it as a reserve, but if you have a reserve, then okay, I mean, I just, that's why I wanted to clarify.
We, we were down two big trucks and a one-ton dump truck, even helping out Pleasant Valley. And I apologize to our residents in the town, there was a delay in our service. For about an hour to an hour and a half while we picked up the town of Pleasant Valley. But as of, hopefully by Thursday, our last truck will be up and running. And the trucks I'm asking to surplus tonight are, it's just, I have two backup trucks right now, big trucks. That are up and running right now as, as backups, but the trucks I'm asking for you guys' blessing tonight are. It's just, it's not feasible for us to keep throwing good money after bad money, you know, after these trucks. They're just not worth it to the town, we're better off surplusing these trucks and getting them off of our, our inventory.
Yeah, one of the things that Todd, myself and Michael have sat down and spoke about, the feasibility of putting money into these trucks team. We're, we're just at the point where it's, it's getting, it's, it's not worth it, it really isn't. You'll put more money into what it's going to be worth at this point. But Todd's in pretty good shape, I mean, he's got everything kind, if it wasn't so much the parts, I think this year. Getting parts, I think that's been our biggest issue on air, but, you know. Where we're at.
Okay, you done?
The only other thing I think you guys are going to bring up later on, or hopefully Chris or Mike's going to chime in on is. I'm asking for approval tonight to take Wyatt Kelly from the highway seasonal. Temporary position and move him into the labor position, full-time, that's in the budget. That's forty hours a week. That's in the union with full benefits and stuff like that. I'm also looking for, I have one seasonal rec person tonight. That hopefully either Chris or Mike, what is going to bring up tonight for the record cemetery. I am looking for one more seasonal cemetery person for the summer. It's fourteen fifty an hour, thirty-two hours a week, and it's only seasonal. I believe it's twenty-five hours a week, that's in the budget right now. That's the only position I have open for the spring, summer, fall season.
Are you done?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just trying to move on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next is all business, approve fund balance policy, Tom and Whitton will discuss it.
So we had the public hearing earlier, I'll make the motion and we can discuss. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves resolution number seventeen of twenty-twenty-one. Adopting local law number three of twenty-twenty-one entitled Fund Balance Policy. A co, a copy of which is attached and made a part of this resolution. And that the town clerk be directed to enter this local law into the minutes of this meeting and give due notice of the adoption of this local law to the Secretary of the State of New York.
Giuliano second.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah.
Do you have discussion? I do, but.
Yeah.
What probably else thought? Okay, the discussion item, it's very simple.
Yeah.
It's the same item that I mentioned. Last month at the board meeting. In which I asked that the one-time expenditures be deleted, it was not.
Oh, there was another part of that sentence that was deleted. So I'm apologize if I, if I misunderstood.
You know.
It does, the, the one issue I do have with that comment though, that I'd like to say is. That it doesn't say that we must do it, it says that the use should be appropriated to one fine time expenditures. It doesn't say it must be.
You're really talking semantics and you're going to find it's going to be a problem. Now, if you're happy with it the way it is, I don't care, you're going to have to live with it, the newborn. So just be careful what you wish for, because it could be your problem.
Okay.
So if you choose to not accept my change, fine, I know you'll outvote me anyways.
So, Ray, just clarify or expand upon what your concern is?
My concern is, the way it's written, and I said this last month. That the likelihood you could take any surplus money beyond the threshold, whatever that number comes out to be. Cannot be used for tax reduction. You don't want to reduce taxes, fine, put it in reserve funds, put it in. Other one-shot things, fine, buy more trucks, I don't care. You're not going to reduce taxes, so enjoy yourself, that's all I can say.
Well, if that's the case, then I'm kind of concerned with that too, because in this year's budget, we used a lot of the fund balance to. To buy down the taxes, if not, we, our taxes would have almost doubled.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just made a criticism, I said it twice.
I agree with it, I just wanted you to clarify.
So can we, so we just got to change the, the wording on that, is that all we got to do?
That's what I thought we did before.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought I did too, I'll be honest. I'm trying to find the exact wording from last month that I changed from an older version. So if I'm not looking at the screen, it's.
Ray, do you have it right there, the, the piece that, this, the, the section where, where your concern is?
Oh yeah, the right turn, the same paragraph.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm saying where on here, so we can.
It, well, on the one that you're looking at, it would be the very last page, right above number two.
I got it here, okay.
Where it says, in order to minimize the long-term effect of such use. The excess should be appropriated to one, to fund one-time expenditures and/or be used to establish or increase reserves.
And traditionally, we've used it, we could do that with it in the past. But traditionally, we used to use it to reduce taxes whenever there was extra surplus.
Okay, so.
And that's all I'm trying to preserve.
I, I thought I did delete the wording that you wanted deleted, because there were words that I took out after one-time expenditures. So what do you think it should say? I want to make sure we get it right so that we can just do this.
Just, I would just take the, the, where it says one-time expenditures, replace that with a reduction in taxes. And/or tend to use to establish your increased reserves, fine, I'm no problem with that part.
Can we? Can we keep all three? Can we say one-time expenditures are reduction in taxes and/or be used to establish or increase reserves?
So you're saying just, so just add about the taxes in there? Or you just add the third one?
You want to do it, to me, it just adds more complication to the administration.
Well, it gives, well, I think it, you may think it adds complications, but I think it adds an extra option for us from.
Gives you an extra option.
Yeah.
I, I would be fine without adding that in, I think that hits on both sides.
All right, so to fund one-time expenditures, comma, reduce.
Reduction in tax.
A reduction in taxes, yeah, a reduction in taxes. I want to make sure I write it. And/or be used to establish or increase the reserves.
Now, does this also include the highway?
Yes.
Okay.
This includes highway and general fund.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the time that I have.
Thanks, Ray, I'm glad, I thought I had solved it, I'm sorry I hadn't.
We got it solved.
Okay.
Are we still able to vote on that with making these changes right now, or do we got to repose that?
As amended, so.
As amended, okay.
Yeah. Yep, you're good.
So now. We put as amended in here in the motion.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay. So we do a roll call vote, unless somebody else has anything for the comments. Overly, I, Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
I.
Dean Michael.
Hi.
Whitton.
Hi.
Motion carrying.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
All right. Routine work we overcome, there you go, good.
Discuss opening rec park, you want to redo what you said before, or was that good?
Uh, no, I only think I just wanted to mention, everything will be on the web as we build on the dates and so on. But if you remember the end of last year that we submitted a, a request for a block grant. For Friends Park.
Yeah.
And because of the COVID nineteen. Problems and so on, it's been, the decisions have been delayed. We expected it in January and in February, so I did make contact today. And hopefully we're expecting some kind of a decision at the end of this month. Which would mean that if we were awarded that grant, that we would be able to do some very, very nice updates. And replace the ball field, fencing and so on in Friends Park. So I will keep you posted, but I, I know that some individuals have asked me where we are with that, so, okay? Pardon?
I have a question on the rec. Are we going to enforce the park is closed rules, or should we open it and have Todd plow it? Because every morning I drive by and people are walking their dogs down there, and someone's going to slip and fall. And just going home tonight, I saw probably half dozen cars and a bunch of kids with, with shovels. I think they were going to attempt to shovel off the basketball court, so we either have to enforce that. It's not going to be open, or we should plow it so that people don't get hurt trying to get to, in the park.
Well, I, enforcing it, the only way I have to enforce it. And I've done this, is I've asked the sheriff's department to swing by as often as they can. And if they see anybody down there, they ask them to leave. I mean, the, the park is not going to open till April fifteenth, okay? Not officially, and unfortunately, I don't know how else to have surveillance down there, so.
My, my druthers is to open it, to be honest with you.
I'm not going to open.
We, and they're going to go down and get hurt.
We could possibly end up with snow or something in the next week or month. And then we have no, nothing's plowed, we've got all kinds of.
Well, then you can close.
Liberties, if they, if we open it and nothing is taken care of, so. No, it's not officially open till the fifteenth, but the sheriffs will tour as much as possible and. Ask people to leave if that's the case.
I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
Pardon?
I said, my feeling is that we should open it, I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
I mean, if we're, let me ask you this Dean, if we open it, are, are the bathrooms and stuff aren't going to be open, correct? It's just basically open the gate and make sure.
Walk their dogs down there, that they're not supposed to be walking the dogs anyway. People walk their dogs down there, that they're not supposed to be walking the dogs anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
We're going down to play basketball and they're parking up on the road, so. We could have an accident, someone can get hit on the road, or someone can slip going down the hill with the snow, I just, you know, we have to either enforce it or not, and. And I see, I personally feel that we should open it.
The the enforcement's a little is the tough part, I know I cut drive by and I see people parking up on the edge of the road.
We as well. We have not plowed Frammark Park. We did plow the nature trails here at the town board complex for people to walk their dogs if they have to. Frammark or Friends Park Clinton Corners, we made one pass in and out. And that was it because of East Clinton for emergency purposes only, other than that, I have not clouded the whole entire parking lot or anything else at Friends Park. Like I said, Friends Frammark Park, I have not clouded that at all, because Nancy said it has been closed and I haven't even unlocked the gates down there.
I mean, if the town board says they want it open sooner, fine, but I just feel that. Weather wise and the park is not ready, we do not have the staff to get it ready. And there's a liability if something happens and we've opened it and there's ice and snow, something happens. I just don't feel that we're only talking a matter of a few more weeks.
And they talk, talk in a month, just under, just over a month, it'll be open.
Well, like I said, people are walking down that hill or down the roadway and it's not not plowed, so liability, we're gonna have liability either way.
Yeah, so I mean, was is that is that a case, right, that you'd see that? If someone slipped down the hill, if the gates were closed and it's and we have a sign that says it's closed, and I mean, liability is.
They could be fined for trespassing, I guess, but it's still, if someone trespass on your property and gets hurt, they can still.
True, you're 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 and and you're, you you know that, you know insurance.
Well.
You're not immune to go to court.
Yeah, it's true.
I'm not in favor, but the board has this way into.
Todd, do let me ask you on this on on your side, does it have, you have the resources? If we get another snowstorm, if this was to hypothetically open up, would we have the resources to be able to? Make sure that was on on top of that, you know, so there's no other issue, you know, no potential issues?
Well, if it snows, I think we should close the gate, it's just that right now, everything's melting and it's causing ice.
Yeah, no, it'll be so freeze at night, that's correct.
Yes. We we can plow it and sand it, sand it, I don't want to salt that because it's dirt, if we salt it, it's gonna turn to mud. But like Dean says, if it freezes overnight, it's gonna be ice and for us to go down there every morning, you know, just to sand that. For the two, three people that do use that. Is it feasible to send a truck and guy down there twenty twenty eight, twenty nine dollars an hour to sand that in the morning? It's up to you guys, it's it's your authority and you guys have the. Right to say for me to do it or not to do it, so I'm gonna throw it in your your laps and. Ask you guys, if you guys want me to do it, I will do it.
I wasn't thinking of you doing it every morning, that's not what I was saying, is like, if you plowed a path down there and just. Cut up the parking lot a little so so someone can park down there. You know, it's not like we do fifty cars, but a couple dozen, you know, half dozen car parking. And then just.
Parking lot is icy, then the court is gonna be icy, okay? And I just, I feel that for the matter of a few weeks, we're talking about, I know we've had a couple of, we're having a couple of nice days. But that doesn't mean that's gonna last, and I just feel to protect the town from liabilities. If they go in there and we're not open, it's a different story, so.
What about opening on April first instead of April fifteenth? It gets us closer to nicer weather.
Again, it's weather dependent, you know?
Yeah.
Um, you know, if if the weather's great, April first is fine.
I mean, my guess is, I mean, even last.
We don't have any staff down there yet, because we haven't hired anyone yet.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's supposed to be almost seventy on Friday.
Yeah, I know, but then it could be lizard next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, next week is hoping on the forties.
So what does the board want to do?
I'm in favor of keeping it closed.
Yeah, I am too.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I may maybe, I would say maybe April first, maybe move it a little bit sooner, but it, I I would say weather. Dependent, maybe, that's why I it it's a tough thing, because I can see it both ways, we open, we leave it open and someone slips and then there's an issue, someone on the road, they get in there, trying to go down.
Well, I just the kids parking on top of the road and.
Oh, I know it's, listen, I've seen that night.
Going by there.
Yeah.
They shouldn't be there, okay, they shouldn't be there.
Well, they are.
You know, that's that's the problem. The other thing I will say, we have extended. The backside, you know, after October, based on weather, we have left the park open. Through November, okay, if the weather permits, and that's a that's a little more manageable. But I really don't feel comfortable opening it too early because of unpredictable weather, so.
You want to vote on this thing or just?
Well, it seems like it was three to two, no matter what, so I I I guess we don't need to.
Okay, I'm just trying to move on.
Okay.
Okay, next one is a tax cert, Dean Michael.
I wasn't in on too much of the details on this. But I make a rose, I make a motion that the town board approved the following resolution be resolved. Resolution number eighteen of two thousand and twenty one, the town board of the town of Clinton hereby authorizes the attorney of the town of Clinton. Shane J Egan Esquire to enter into stipulation with the attorney of petitioner Alan B Rapley Esquire. The terms of which are set forth in the attached stipulation. Two thousand and nineteen dash five two eight nine two and hereby authorizes Shane Egan to sign the stipulation on behalf of the town of Clinton.
Giuliano second.
Any further discussion?
So just for, you know, for everybody's, I mean, you can see it's in the packet, you know, the property was originally assessed for four hundred and fifty seven thousand. They're getting. Or they reduced it to two hundred and sixty five thousand, so it's it's reducing the the taxes by one hundred and ninety two thousand. So that's what the amount is, but you know, typically in these cases, when they've gone that far to make a settlement, it's kind of like out of our hands anyway. Unless we want to go to court.
Yeah, which is more money.
Right.
So roll call vote, Ben, overly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Chris.
Hi. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you heard me.
Dean Michael.
Hi.
Whitton.
Hi.
Motion carried. Giuliano is gonna talk about a highway credit card.
Okay, so myself, Michael and and Todd, we've been talking about. Having a discussion on allowing this highway superintendent have a credit card. On here, some of the things that we spoke about. Was given a limit of not to exceed of around five thousand dollars and each purchase not to exceed a thousand dollars, which kind of goes in line with. Todd's ability through our procurement process. The issue that's been coming up is on some of the parts and stuff, as we need stuff, getting stuff from our normal vendors and we gotta go outside our vendors. You know, sometimes it's a five dollar part, ten dollar part or whatever. It just makes it easier for Todd to facilitate getting these parts that are needed and it'd be based off of. You know, the highway funds rather than using our regular cars or a regular card, I should say, that we have. That kind of comes out of our our regular accounts, not the highway accounts. Anyone have any comments or anything that they want us to add into that? Or ideas?
Did you make the motion?
Oh, I didn't make the mo, here, I'll make the motion. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolution be it resolved that the town board approves. Authorizing an M and T visa credit card in the name of the highway superintendent Todd Martin to use. Where there is no other reasonable or convenient form of payment. Due to the timing, vendor location, policies of the vendor. And where the town makes regular periodic payments. As a subscriber for services with a card limit not to exceed five thousand, five thousand dollars and an individual purchase limit not to exceed one thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion now?
So question would be, what kind of purchases will we need a credit card that we couldn't do like a net thirty bill me?
So sometimes like we've been running into a few events where we don't have typical vendors that we'd use, we'd have to go out outside of the scope. For some parts or whatever else to do that, as of now. From speaking to Todd, there are several other highway superintendents that the towns have issued a card with similar. Backing with a limit of around five thousand to a thousand. And then the money that we normally would use from one of the other credit cards is coming out of a different account, so now it's all basically if. Or whenever Todd needs a reasonable purchase and he has the ability to make that purchase of up to a thousand dollars per pure procurement policy. So it just makes it easier for facilitating it for him.
Todd has also run into situations where he might be able to get hardware or whatever from Williams Lumber. But he knows other places where he can get it the same day and the same amount of time, but it's for less money, but we don't have an account there, so he can't do it. And so he could be saving the highway fund money. If he had more options to buy things.
Well, we've survived all these many years with only one card in my office. And we kept all the records and ensured that we got receipts now. The problem we're gonna have is, I'll tell you right now. I can get him a card. That's what you guys want, we'll get him a card. I am not gonna be responsible for any of the finances or the payments of that. Which I normally am responsible for, because I'm not a party to what it is. We have not had requests to use the county card. I mean, the town card from the highway to people recently, if it was so critical, why don't they come across the grass and ask for it? Nancy asks, she gets it, she uses it and returns it, I use it, sometimes Arlene uses it. I mean.
I think, Ray, I think the the issue is, well, first of all, the accountability, everything just like with vouchers and everything else that goes through from month to month that there's accountability for that. And when the card's got to get paid, we got to show where those invoices are or those receipts for, so I don't think that's gonna be a problem, I think. One of the things that Michael and myself have discussed. Was to put together a a credit card policy. You know, in there, which is something that we both talked about working on. To to try to solve some of these issues. But like I said, it does, it it is mo from what I understand, several towns now with the highway superintendents are given that ability. To run that and plus then it's it's based off of the highway funds rather than the general funds that the other card goes to, so. We're, you know, we're kind of keeping the funds, we're not having the transfer funds back and forth, so I don't think the accountability part of it's gonna be a problem. You know, I I think as long as we reasonably within by maybe the next meeting. Is to put some sort of policy that would be on all the cards and well, meaning to. Our cards that we have some sort of credit card policy, which would not be a bad thing to have.
There are highway expenses that are automatically charged to the my credit card.
And that that's one.
And we just code them to the highway department, there's no funds transferred.
Okay, right, I understand that, and and some of those, and and at that point, we can also now move those. Funds poten- potentially, those charges back to. This card, and then it has, it's just now it's already funded right into the right, you know, right side where it needs to be.
Look, I realize you want the card, you don't care what I say, so you know, let's vote.
Well, that's not true, Ray, Ray, we had a conversation on this, I says what we're trying to do is come up with a plan at.
I'm having it now, never was brought up to me before.
Okay, as an example, I had the time clock went down here, I had to jump through hoops to get a time clock that was two hundred and fifty dollars for a time clock. Where I had to sit here every morning and every night, sign the guys in and out, when I had to jump through hoops to get a time clock. If I had the accessibility to either a credit card or a vendor that had this time clock, I would have jumped through hoops. And we'd have a accountability system instead of one of either me or the foreman sitting here signing people in and out. The other side to this is with the coronavirus, we're trying to get parts, plow blades, wing blades, bolts, alternators and starters. Some of the normal vendors that we use. They are either two to three months behind, when I'm in the middle of a snowstorm and I need a part or a a. A bolt or something that our normal vendors that we have an account with that I can't get to. Then I have to sit here and wait and then I'm gonna go down trucks in order to jump through hoops. To get a part here, to get the trucks up and running to serve residents and taxpayers of this town.
Yeah, I I realize it's too much trouble to walk across the grass and ask for the car, so you know, I'm not gonna argue anyone. I'm not gonna make any further discussion on my part, vote for it, you'll get it, you got three, you'll vote one, you got it, so. Now I'll get you the card, but I'm not taking responsibility for the monitoring of that card.
Well, I mean, you know, so, listen, I mean, there's there's pros and cons to anything. One of the things that I have is I have four different credit cards and they're specifically for certain accounts or certain business relationships. And so for an auditing and for a a a tax, end of year tax, you know, bill, it's easier for me to get a summary. In account that's only for that particular purpose, so there is some accounting benefits to it. You know, but there's also some concern, I mean, you know, you to say not to have a policy, I mean, we definitely should have a policy. It would definitely have to be audited every month by, while you guys are, you know, we we do, we do, we'd be ordering the highway. And as long as we have those checks and balances, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying. You know, if we can open up more accounts and just do net thirty, then that's fine too.
And then in terms of a policy, so. I'm gonna be working on a policy, it'll certainly be presented to you hopefully with two weeks to look it over before the next week meeting, so I'll have something soon, but. It's gonna be based on, starting off, what what is in this motion with, you know, the location, the timing, the. Policies of the vendor, you know, a thousand dollar limit on each person's five thousand dollar credit limit, you know, and. These are reasonable things, these are, this is based on policies that other towns around us have.
Okay.
And it's not a personal thing, and and I I hope that doesn't keep coming into our meetings like that, because it's not a personal thing.
So we shouldn't be voting tonight if we're gonna get the policy to make the decision, or are we voting subject to the policy decision?
Well, we're voting on this and we decided to make the motion with. Uh, the the outline of 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 guidelines for this credit card. And then those same guidelines are gonna be in a credit card policy that we're gonna develop.
Both the credit.
That will be for both the credit cards, not just this one.
Yeah.
Okay, ready to vote? Guess we gotta vote. Overly, nay. Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
I.
Dean Michael.
Hi.
Whitton.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Okay, so the next thing, I'll make the motion, then we'll discuss. I make a motion to approve the following resolution be it resolved that the town board approves the purchase of a forty eight inch scag tiger cat two. From Brady's Power Equipment at a cost not to exceed eight thousand four hundred twelve dollars from the cemetery fund code eight eight one zero point two.
Giuliano second.
I had sent out an email to all of you. We've got a bunch of quote, we got four different quotes from Keels and Brady's and Conway's and Reardon Briggs. Some of those companies gave us up to ten different prices for ten, ten different machines. And going through it, we we chose the forty eight inch because it it'll work best for us instead of fifty two inch. And we, the scag tiger comes with great reviews and is. Commercial grade, which is really what we need, the amount that it's gonna be used.
I mean, did you write the RFP specifically for the forty eight inch?
We asked for forty eight inch, some of the vendors only had fifty two inch, so they sent us. We asked for forty eight inch. Some of the vendors only had fifty two inch. So they sent us those prices.
Seems kind of strange that they couldn't order it, you know, specifically with a different deck or.
Yeah, they were, they were giving us prices of the things that they had in stock.
There was, there's two things on that. The forty eight inch mower fits in between the rows.
I know we want the forty eight inch. I'm just saying, I can't believe that a vendor wouldn't sell you what you want.
That's off New York State bid with the Pro Source off the from the state.
And and this is the second time I've gone through this because I was also getting quotes together for a a grant that we're hoping to submit for the cemeteries. And it was the same thing. They couldn't get me prices, a couple of them on forty eight inch. They would only give them for fifty two inch.
And price wise, Dean, I saw there there's a couple of fifty twos might have been a little bit cheaper. But when I went back on some of the brands and I started to go through the research on them as far as what's gonna last and what's gonna be more durable. The some of them are.
And everything else. I mean, that makes a big deal.
What's that?
The steel on the decks and everything.
Yeah, and and some of them were like light commercial or home like homeowner special, you know, but it's like better, it's like better than your standard homeowner, but it's not quite. And if we're having multiple people using them over the time, the the Tiger Cat is definitely more of a commercial type mower compared to some of the, some of the other goods were on a Patriot, which I have for myself for my house here, which is fine for me, but I even had one of my guys use it and and bent it up already because it's it's lighter gauge and steel. And and then the the transmissions and stuff like that were a little different, you know.
Okay, ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Whitten.
Aye.
Motion carried. We got a new lawnmower.
Exciting.
Where are you, Dean?
I I couldn't hear Ray. So there's a little error in this, so I'll fix it because there was two emails or there was one email with really two different things that that John was talking about. And then so the zoning enforcement officer basically replied back to me to the ag event. And then Mike Chris stanza actually called for me to want to discuss other things. And so long long story made shorter is that they want to increase and change a lot of the the structure of our fees. And and so this in particular was written more about, you know, new construction. Instead of doing it, the the formula that we have now, which is based on cost, that it should be based on square footage. So that's not for the ag event law. So let me just read it the way it should be, I guess. I make a motion be it resolved that the town board approves resolution nineteen of twenty twenty one, town of Clayton fee schedule to include application renewal violation fees for the ag event law. And that the site plan special permit application will be two hundred and seventy five dollars, which is the same for everybody. The agricultural event permit application will be seven hundred and fifty dollars initially. And the agricultural event annual renewal application will be five hundred dollars. Is there a second?
Giuliano second.
Still have the rest of.
Can I just ask you then, are you going, Dean, to come back with another list of changes, a more comprehensive for building construction? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't changed any of our fee structure in over five years. So both Arlene and Mike and and John were all saying that we're so far out from all the other towns around us that we should really take a comprehensive look on everything. So I don't know if it'll be done by next meeting, but you know, certainly we'll be working on it to to come up with a fair increase.
You need a second, Ray?
I said Giuliano second.
Okay, thanks.
There was a discussion in the email of a fine or violation fee of a hundred, one thousand five hundred dollars.
Oh, yes. Part of the second, the of operating an agricultural event without town approval and or permit is fifteen hundred dollars per incident.
What's an incident? Is that per day or per event?
I guess per per event.
The other question on that same item, have you checked with the town attorney as to whether or not that is a legal amount that we can charge for this kind of violation?
Well, I've talked to Shannon before, but I haven't cleared these items.
Well, I'm more concerned about the violation fee because that's governed by other laws, not just us alone. We just randomly can't pick a number.
Yeah, I I seem to remember when we did those short term rentals that we had to choose a level of violation that it would be if somebody violated it. And that that scale is in our fee schedule already. I believe we called it zoning violation, whatever, but would, but it already had a a number attached to it.
That's different than what we have here.
Yeah, I I know. And that's what I'm saying. I think because I had, we had discussed for the short term rental, having a our own number that we chose. And I was told that we couldn't, that we had to choose among the menu that's in our fee schedule already.
I I don't think that that's a valid number. Just personal opinion, haven't talked to the attorney, but it seems a little out of line to start at that number.
So we we basically need to, I guess, maybe talk to the town attorney. And then if we gotta amend something, you know, I I think thi- this is gonna be one of them things kind of like that I guess has been on the back burner would like to see the cell towers or whatever with the with the fees, the fines in the back that it's easier to pay if it's too low, it might easier just to pay the fine and push it, you know, push it through. I think we need to have a a real conversation on that because I mean, if it's too low and and I I guess we gotta see what legally we can do.
Thirty, forty thousand dollar wedding.
Yeah, it's fifteen hundred bucks. It's nothing. It's cost of doing businesses most in business. We say it's the cost of doing business.
Dean, if you're going to revisit the construction costs next month, wanna revisit the function fee and just go ahead because people are starting to apply, we can at least get those fees in the fee schedule and talk about the violations next month.
Yep, that's that's good idea.
Everybody understand?
We're leaving the violation off and we're.
Yeah.
Okay, then ready to vote? Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitten.
Aye.
Motion carried. So we revisit this next one. The next one is approved public employee blanket bond with Unica Mutual Insurance Company. This is to ensure the actions of our town employees. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the three year public employee blanket bond policy with Utica Mutual Insurance Company for the period of February fifteenth, twenty twenty one to February fifteenth, twenty twenty four for three annual installments of one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
I sent it out to you, I think, earlier, saying, well, she was sent soon. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Mike, Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitten.
Aye.
Motion carried. The other one next is that Town of Washington is declaring himself lead agency in a type one seeker thing in their town. Not really that close to us, but by the seeker process, they gotta ask everybody around them. And it requires nothing on our part because it's over on the other side of Millbrook itself. So we're not even close to the border. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board authorizes it empowers and directs the town supervisor to sign the lead agency coordination letter naming the town of Washington as lead agency in the matter of a petition from Janet's Farm LLC for an amendment to the zoning code. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second. So this is not a property that also borders or 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 comes over into Clinton?
No.
Because we have one definitely that will come up with Rhinebeck and us and another one that may be with Pleasant Valley and us.
Yeah, but this one is.
Where we we have a part of the property and they have part of the property.
Yeah, the other side of Millbrook, so. What we mean. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, surplus items.
Okay, so what Todd was talking about was these items that we've went through on here looking to surplus them at that point. I'm just, before I make the motion, I'm just gonna read through just a rough idea of what so everyone knows what what would be surplus. I know it's on the attachment A. We have a one ton diesel truck dump plow and sand. But the and the plow and sander included, he's looking for a six thousand dollar minimum bid. We got a diesel parts truck that's been in the back. That's just really cabin chassis. That's just been pretty much brutalized at this point, looking twenty five hundred dollars on that. We got a diesel cabin chassis only. Again, one that's been kind of used and abused over time, five thousand. That's just getting that out. We got a cabin chassis with a dump body. That's a nineteen ninety. That's a pretty old ten thousand. And then we got a one ton duly truck with the dump plow and sand with the again, the plow and sander included. That's looking for ten thousand dollars. And you know, the mileage, mileage isn't so high, but it's just the bodies and everything else are pretty much in and the mechanics of them are going. So I would like to make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the sale of highway surplus items through absolute auction as listed on attachment A.
Is there a second?
Whitten second.
Okay, discussion. Again, to comment, one, normally don't you specify mileage that's shown on the gauge on vehicles to give a measure of how used or unused they are.
What you're talking about for the yeah, yeah.
You know.
We can add, we can add that in there that I don't have on here.
Number and you got the.
Let me see, I just lost.
And it models, I just, I know it's not difficult, just matter of what.
Yeah, we, yeah, we got, yeah.
I mean, the auctioneer will have it on there, Ray, but you're saying that it should be on our list?
Well, they're supposed to get information from our list as the basis of what they put in their thing. For example, if we put a minimum bid of the first one at six thousand, okay, that's what he should be putting on because that's what we agreed on.
Yeah, the auctioneer will ask all those questions and get a detailed information as to it's working, not working, no warranty.
That's, that's the prices I'm looking at. That's the bottom line. I'll let those trucks or or vehicles that are being surplus. I'm not gonna let them go for pennies. This is what the vehicles are actually work through Kelly Blue Book and talk with other vendors and stuff, what these vehicles are worth. That's the bottom line that I'm gonna let these vehicles go for. If we do not get those prices, then I will not let those vehicles go.
You gotta understand that the auctioneer is adding twenty percent onto that. So.
Yes.
That's specified in the sale deal, not in.
Yes, that's true. Pleasant Valley auctions over there are including trade and points wrote the one that we've been dealing with.
Yeah. I I just, you know, mileage was a standard thing that's money.
Are we going to agree that the mileage has to be on the attachment? Because I I have to notify everybody tomorrow. So that's just extra information we have to gather.
Is that an easy thing for you to do, Todd? Just get the mileage on all these?
Yes, I can have that to you either first thing tomorrow morning by noon time. I can have those to you or or beforehand if you guys want.
Yeah, just, I mean, basically for me, so I'll do the official town board notice so that I send out what the town board wants on the attachment.
Okay. That's not a problem.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, ready to vote?
You you hold on, you could just say mileage available or needed or something and just let it process that one. Either way, is it's not really cumbersome. Right. It doesn't clog up the works or anything. You think it's necessary? Okay, right.
Okay. Okay, we're ready to vote. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Mike, Whitten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, resignations and appointments. Any other items before I go into resignations and appointments? Okay, I don't see anything else. Okay, this is what we have to do is Wyatt Kelly got resigned because he's going from one type of operation into another. So we're gonna appoint him at the next motion. So it's just the process. I make a motion that the town board accept the resignation of Wyatt Kelly as the full time winter seasonal highway employee effective March thirty first, twenty twenty one. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Vote. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Whitten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, this is the appointment of Wyatt to the labor position in the highway department. I make a motion that the town board approves Wyatt Kelly, full time highway labor at a rate of pay as per the C S E A contract for one dollar less than the seventeen dollars and sixty cents per hour for a period of six months or one thousand hours, starting April first, twenty twenty one. Full medical eye and dental coverage with an employee contribution of fifteen percent and paid leave benefits as per the C S E A contract and paid from D five one one zero point one one zero. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one is the appointment of Kyle Mackin as a maintenance worker in the highway department under the seasonal category where we had summer, winter, well, since he's full time all the time right now. I made a new one. Okay, and that was in the move funds, right? Made a laborer highway thing. So I I did that. It's not called labor, it's called maintenance. So it's not intermixed with the union contract. So and it's starting dates here for recreation are the same as what they were before and all that sort of stuff. I make a motion that the town board appoints Kyle Mackin to the position of full time maintenance worker highway at fifteen dollars and seven cents per hour, working thirty two hours per week, starting April first, twenty twenty one. Working twenty eight weeks for recreation and starting October fifteenth, twenty twenty one to March thirty first, twenty twenty two, working for highway with full medical dental and eye benefits paying fifteen percent employee contribution and general fund benefit hours paid from D five one one zero point three three. Is there a second?
And Giuliano second.
Yeah, what I did was I moved the money from the rec fund that was allocated for this into the highway fund. So we have one set of works. And the the rate of pay, I did a weighted average for that period of time. So we don't have to do extra RPCs and everything else. Every time things change, I remember to do it. So that's what this is. Overly, aye. Cunningham.
You didn't ask if they had comments. So I have a comment.
Yeah.
This is not gonna be a problem with the labor union? This is not gonna be a problem with the labor union?
No, because it's not in the labor, the union contract job.
Okay.
No.
It's the same position that Wyatt Kelly had before uh wrecked, summer, fall, and then transitions into the highway in the fall, winter, uh early spring.
Yeah.
I I would like, before we vote, I would like to say something. Um it is so much confusion whether it's highway money, whether it's uh rec money. So this is a good thing. And um Todd and uh Dan Harkin Rider, the direct uh uh the parks and myself are gonna sit down within the week and we're gonna just hammer out a letter of uh understanding, a document of understanding as who has responsibility for what. So that there won't be any confusion in the future, access to the park, and everybody knows who's doing what. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we'll do Oberle, I Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Whitten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh now we got a planning board member. I make a motion that the board appoints Katrina Maxine Nova as a member of the planning board for a term of office from March tenth, twenty twenty one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven to fill the unexpired term of Tracy Ruzika who resigned. Uh okay, is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Discussion, roll call, vote Oberle, I Giuliano.
Aye.
Whitten.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, then here's something about Jamie. I don't know.
No, I think at this point, um no, this this shouldn't have been on here. This has been not on here.
Okay.
Nope.
Didn't wanna miss something.
Yeah, I I didn't even see it does under this coming off.
Yeah.
Which which was on there, right?
Jamie Zizinski.
Jamie Zizinski. I was gonna bring that up at the uh Jamie Ziz- uh Zizinski. Um he is the M E O's position. Um with you guys' motion, when you guys hired him back on November ninth, I believe it was, it was either uh six months or a thousand hours. In between tonight's meeting and the next town board meeting, he will hit his uh thousand hours. I'm asking the town board if we can lift his probationary period um before the next town board meeting um to bring him up to the dollar less that was um approved at his higher rate. The reason why I'm asking that is because um like I said, he's gonna hit the thousand hours before the next town board meeting. Um Jamie has gone above and beyond um what I've asked of him um every single day. He also um is the only one here in the highway department that has a C D L class A license to haul uh with the ten wheeler and the trailer to move our equipment around. Um and to be honest and fair with you, for somebody in that position to be classified as an M E O, not a H M E O as everybody else, um which is a a pay decrease compared to the H M E O position to what he's in as an M E O position. Um I'm gonna ask town board tonight to lift his uh probationary period um before the next town board meeting. It's a dollar less. Um it's pennies to dollars between uh March and April. This guy's gone above and beyond, like I said, what he's expected of. Um he's here every morning, every day. He's willing to stay late um to do everything and anything. And like I said, he's the only one here that has a class A license to haul our equipment around from job site to job site or from vendors to get them serviced. And to hold back another month on this gentleman is, I think is absurd. I I I think the town board should approve him tonight to um go up to what he's supposed to be paying as a M E O off his uh probationary period.
Problem is we can't, Todd, um when you have a union labor union that negotiates a contract and and one of the things that we agreed upon was to go to the thousand hours to kind of take up some of the conditions where someone was working part-time several months. So you know, throughout the years, um especially the seasonal guys, um and then gets hired on a full-time basis. They were still having to go that six-month time period. So by offering that thousand hours, we kind of gave kind of a reward for that person that's been around with us for years, not having to wait for that six-month period. But when you have a labor contract, you gotta follow the labor contract. Or if one of the other guys wanna complain, then we have a labor problem.
But the the contract wasn't signed until after January and this gentleman was hired in November.
The contract was retroactive.
Yeah, and and Todd, that's that's what I, you know, what when I spoke to uh Dean and Nancy when they were sister on the contract, that that's the problem. It is retroactive on that and and it opens up a can of worms that uh, you know, I I I I get what you're trying to do and and there's other things, you know, when we get into training and stuff like that, you know, that we spoke about, that uh we're gonna have discussions on and we're, you know, there's other things that potentially we can work out and to do some amendments and stuff like that. Um and then obviously we get Nancy and Dean because they're part of the, you know, work, you know, they work on the union contracts and stuff on that. Um but I I I I know the and the reason I'm saying this to you, Todd, because we've had a lot of conversation on this. And I I'd be the first one that would want to uh give credit where credit's due.
Well, I think we all would. That's that.
Yeah, we give not only just.
Gentleman's gone above and beyond what I've asked of him, you know, and and like I said, between March and April's board meeting, you're you're talking three weeks. I mean, three weeks. That's that's it to give this gentleman what he's due, you know, as a.
But if he gets it, but if he he'll automatically fits that that thousand hours beforehand, he'll get soon as it gets bumped up, automatically it's gonna go.
So then can we make a motion tonight that if this gentleman hits his thousand hours before the next town board meeting, I can lift him off probation and give him that dollar raise?
Well, I think that's.
You don't, you don't need to. You don't need to. It's automatic, but he's on probation for a year. His other rate is six months or a thousand hours, but the contract calls for his probation is a year. So that's it. There's two separate issues.
Yeah.
Todd, um.
The probation is only really about termination where the other is about to pay. So one doesn't have anything really to do with the other.
As soon as he hits a thousand hours, that's the day that you start paying him his regular rate. You don't need a motion. Just check the calendar.
Okay, I I just wanna make sure so this way I don't get toppled and stuff because like I said, this gentleman has gone above and beyond what I've asked of him. Um especially with a class A license. He's the only one here with a class A license because that's the other thing I wanna bring up tonight at the end. Is he is the only one with a class A license to haul with the ten wheeler, with the trailer to haul any equipment around. So if he takes off vacation, sick time, or quits, there is, there is no other person here that has a class A license to legally haul our equipment around from job site to job site or from vendor to vendor to get service or get fixed.
And and Todd, as part of our our conversation that we've had and um you know, and I've been starting to talk to, you know, some of the other board members on here that, you know, we're, we gotta work out some sort of training program to get our guys uh up, you know, so we can get up multiple guys having class A and and from our conversation that most towns now are really looking at, you gotta be a class A to come in. So tho- those are the issues that we have. You know, unfortunately, things were done one way, one time, and I know I spoke to Nancy regarding that and and you know, she had some valid points as well. But it's a discussion that we'll all put together and we'll work on, you know, because we want our town to prosper and we wanna have people have opportunity for them to get the proper training for for their job and and move forward and so forth.
It's, you know, also part of the the labor contract is, you know, not only did we put in that thousand hour um to kind of help people out, but then we put in the M E O instead of someone going from labor all the way up to H M E O and really not being qualified to use all the equipment. Now, we can't penalize the guys that are already in, but anyone new can rank up through the system the proper way where they're jumping from labor to M E O to H M E O with those experiences. Now technically with his experience, he should probably be H M E O. So I mean, that's you know, when we have availability, so he should definitely be classified in that higher category.
Alright.
Can I say something now? Okay, first of all, Todd, you got a good problem. All right. Number one, the union requires everyone to meet the requirements of the job. You've got someone who exceeds that. Unfortunately, there's not a real um way you can step outside the union to reward him for that, but you certainly can document his performance, which in the future may make a difference. Okay, secondly, you talk about he's the only one and you talked about trying to see if he could train some others. You could write a job description and have it evaluated to have it added to the highway department, but it will have to be approved by the union to tell you've got a trainer as well. Okay, and that's gonna take a little time and the union will have to agree to that. And if that person becomes a trainer, then you may have some compensation that goes along with that. But to do anything else, you're setting a precedent that is not acceptable in the union.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, if we, well, we're gonna probably start negotiating on the union contract next year. Uh but you know, um one of the things is that we could put in a category for, and I I've heard mechanic. Uh there's no category for that right now. Um trainer, we don't have a category for that right now. But you know, that would be part of the union contract negotiation because then we'd also have to set what the uh what the earnings would be for that.
Okay, now would the town board be willing to um let me have two guys go and get their C D L class A permits to go get their class A license? Because like I said, Jamie's the only one right now with a class A license to with ten wheeler and a trailer to move our equipment from job site to job site or vendor to vendor. Like I said, if he takes off, quits, or um vacation or something like that, I I'm stuck. I I cannot move equipment from job site to job site unless we're driving over the road and like mini excavator and a couple of the other pieces of equipment. You can't drive down the road. So then now my hands are tied from moving equipment from job site to job site unless the town board um lets me have uh two other people with a class A license. Um for now on, way before I hire somebody or look at an application, I'm gonna look for that class A license. Stamfordville, the town of Stamfordville, the town of Mylan, um and the town of Red Hook, before they even consider an application, they want a class A license. So this way you can um operate everything and anything as far as trucks and equipment and moving equipment from job site to job site or vendor to vendor to get it serviced or or fixed. Because like I said, right now my hands are tied as far as Jamie because Jamie is the only one besides myself that has a class A license. And with the legal contract, like you guys said, with C S A contract, I can't drive or operate the equipment unless I offer it to these guys first. If I don't offer it to these guys, then we're gonna have agreements on our hand. Jamie's the only one unless you guys approve to let me either have one or two guys here that are C S E A uh in the contract or union to go get their class A license to move this equipment for me. Because if not, then then I'm stuck in a rock and hard place with moving equipment.
So 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 Todd, what is the amount? Because this is something we also talked about. You're talking about them getting the 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 amount to take to to um uh take the uh permit test and and the road test. You're talking about those two.
If they get their permit, if the town board is willing, I'll take it out of the the highway D code to get them their permit. We can train them on the job now because we do have the truck and the trailer to get them their class A license to uh be able to. Uh no, I don't.
I do.
It was part of the contract negotiation and I think we we did not approve paying for them to get um the class A license or reimburse. Uh I don't have it in front of me, so I can't tell you exactly what we what we finalized, the determination. So that's.
I have it. Do you want me to look it up for you? I have it in front of me.
But that would dictate what we can do and what we can't do. But then again, back to what I was saying is that this should be one of the qualifications to becoming an H M E O is that you have to have that class license license. And and so if someone wants to get to that higher pay level, they're going to have to get themselves to that level in the future. Obviously, everybody's in that H that H M O category. They're gonna stay there, but uh from now in the future, we should have that as one of the requirements.
Yes, yes, because right now, like with the backhoe, the backhoe is down. Um in order to get that service, um I need a class A driver with the truck and trailer to take it up. Jamie's the only one. So if Jamie takes a week off, that backhoe is is gone for me. I I cannot use or operate or get that machine fixed or any of the trucks or any of the other equipment to a vendor to get fixed unless.
We pay for.
Drive and operate it. You know what I'm saying? And he's on probation. He's a dollar less, you know, so I I it's one hand worse is the other with this with the, I I've been on both sides of the table. I've been in the contract, I've been a union rep. I I negotiated contracts and stuff. I know that contract inside and out. There's there's loopholes in this where we can do it, but if if the town board, the five of you guys agree to it, I'll abide by it because you guys are the jurisdiction over this. But I'm just saying, I'm gonna run into a jam here sooner or later with Jamie being the only one with a class A license to move this equipment. Job site or vendor, vendor.
Have you, have you discussed it with the shop store?
Yes, I have.
Take this discussion offline and figure out what's the best course of action before the next board meeting.
Okay. Yes.
Uh Todd, uh when Jamie changes from the dollar plus, uh let us know so that we can do an RPC.
Okay, I will.
Because I gotta tell a county.
Okay, I will.
Carol, did you find that information or?
I did not.
Okay, I I thought you were, I didn't know if you were waiting.
Yeah, I'm kinda leafing through it, but it's, you know.
I know we talked about it. I don't know if it's in there or not, but we did, that was part of the negotiation. And I don't, we approved it. So that's why I said that, you know, if it's not in there, it's not there. But then again, you know, like I said, I I can call up Doug, but you know, if if the guys are gonna complain, then that's an issue too. So that's why I say when you talk to the shop steward, then.
Yeah.
What can I take it on it?
It's it's hard, you know, with the union and stuff, you know, I I've tried, I've got phone calls in Doug Morrison with the C S E I down there in Beacon and stuff. I'm waiting for his return phone call on that um to see how to go about it legally and to get us out of the jam. So there's no grievances or any lawyers involved or anything like this, you know. I'm trying to do it so it's legal, legit. So the town board or myself doesn't get in trouble over this.
Okay, let's take it offline and we'll we'll work through the problems and see what kind of uh recommendation would come up.
Yeah, if you don't get ahold of Doug by tomorrow, let me know. I'll call him up.
Okay.
Usually responsive to me pretty quick.
Okay.
Next month item. Moving on, approval of warrants.
I make a motion be resolved that the town board approves the March ninth, twenty twenty-one general fund warrant vouchers number seventy-three through one twenty-one totaling one million three hundred fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents. Wow. And the March ninth, twenty twenty-one highway fund warrant vouchers number thirty-nine through sixty-three totaling a hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty cents. Is there a second?
Giuliano's second.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, I mean, a lot of that's the taxes that we had to pay the other, like I know we paid the library, right?
Well, yeah.
And the two fire districts.
Two fire districts. I just wanted to explain why it was a million dollars going out. It's not really our money. We were just.
It's your fault, Dean. It's.
It wasn't highway. It was not highway. That's right.
Yeah, there was a hundred thousand for the highway bond.
No, no, don't say that.
I know we paid the one fifteen to the library. We paid the fire districts, blah, blah, blah.
We also paid the bond, right? This one?
Right, the bond.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I said. We spend a lot of money upfront. Okay, roll call Oberle, I Giuliano.
Aye.
Whitten.
Aye.
Uh Dean Michael.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to move funds. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that town board approves resolution number twenty of twenty-one of twenty twenty-one rather, a resolution to move funds at the March ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call vote. Uh Oberly, I Giuliano.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Motion carried. Supervisors report that March twenty twenty-one supervisors report will be approved when the twenty twenty books are reconciled, that means when the December records for incumbency payables and all that stuff are all finished up. And the A U D is done. Okay, any other business, otherwise we'll go to adjournments.
I just wanna make this meeting last another thirty seconds um to qualify, just to to clarify, because I didn't like that, I wasn't able to clarify earlier. What was changed in the fund balance policy from last month to now is that it said the excess should be appropriated to one fund one-time expenditures which do not result in recurring operating costs, and that's the part that I deleted that I thought I had done right. So, that was taken out and we added what we added tonight.
Okay. So, I make a motion to.
Uh, I just got one, one thing right right now. Um, I reached out to um Dee Dee Barrett for the grant for the upgrade of the radio system. Um, we are ninety-five percent sure we are gonna get the uh grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's to upgrade the highway department from the low-band uh frequency we have now to the high-band frequency to coincide with the East Clinton and West Clinton Fire District. That is um two new repeaters for the highway department. Um, that is new radios for the trucks, a base station, formal radios, reprogramming of the East Clinton and West Clinton Fire District. So basically, what it comes down to is we will have four frequencies. Um, one will be for the highway department, one will be for East Clinton Fire District, one will be for West Clinton Fire District, and one will be for all three of us to talk together for any trees down, wires down, road closures or anything, so this way the East Clinton, West Clinton, and the highway department can all talk together um on one radio, one frequency. The plus side to that also is um when we do shared services, work with other towns, um instead of us just having the town, town of Clinton frequency, and the other towns have their frequency, we can coincide and talk with the other towns when we do pavement, oil and stoning or helping the other towns out along with the other fire districts. So, um I'd like to thank uh Chris Giuliano and uh Mike Witten for helping me with those grants and stuff. And hopefully, like I said, ninety-five percent sure we have those, uh we've secured that grant through Dee Dee Barrett. Um, it's a Sam's Grant and everything. Um, I'm working with Dee Dee's office right now on the paintwork and everything. And hopefully by next month or the following month, I will have an update with you guys um to let you know anything further on that.
Okay, we done?
Yes.
Okay, adjourned. I make a motion that the town board adjourns the meeting, is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Roll call Oberly, I Giuliano.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Cunningham. Nancy.
Uh she, I I think she said I.
I think she did too.
She's laughing.
I think she's getting laugh gassed or something.
Okay, motion carried. See ya, next month.